Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bryan County Planning and Zoning and Board of Adjustment meeting for August 2024. First item on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes for July 2024, as everyone had a chance to review those minutes.
Yes.
Any questions, comments, concerns, or edits to be made? No? Well, that may I have a motion, please, to approve the July 2024 planning and zoning minutes?
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, July minutes are so passed. Next item on the agenda will be our first item for Board of Adjustment. Do we have a motion, please, to open this public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now in public hearing. Brett?
Good evening. This first request is a variance for 496 Holly Hill Road. The applicant is requesting to reduce the side setbacks from 35 to 25 feet and to reduce the rear setback from 50 to 35 feet. To give you a general idea, this is located on the south end of the county. You can see here on the location map and the zoning map, it is zoned rural residential one acre, and the lot is currently only 0.35 tenths of an acre. So it's far less than anything we would allow to be zoned in the RR1 zoning district. The lot is only 123 feet in depth and 60 feet wide at the road, so it never at any point meets the minimums for an RR1 zoned lot. So the applicant is requesting this variance in order to place a single-wide home, as you can see here, and staff feels it does meet the intent of the ordinance. It's the minimal variance required to place their home, and it was also subdivided in 1971 prior to any zoning ordinance. So staff, oh, and we got a picture of it, too, if you want to see the vacant lot. And staff is recommending approval of the variance because we do feel the variance criteria have been met. And I can answer any questions y'all may have.
Any questions from the board? No, thank you, Brett. Do we have the applicant here? And if so, would you like to speak? No? We have no speaker slips for this. Guys, if you've come in late, if you would like to speak to any of the items on the agenda, on the podium over there, there are the speaker slips, and you can give to Ms. Dawn over here. Since people did come in late, go ahead.
I can have a question for Brett.
Yes, yes. Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against this item number one? No? Okay, with that, Joe.
Sorry, I didn't think of this earlier, but I was just curious to see if the variance that they have requested, is it pretty typical of, I mean, I know there's a lot of different type of housing on Holly Hill and those lots, but is what they're requesting pretty typical of what's there already?
Yeah, so it is. And if you'll remember, we did a similar variance just over a year ago for a house that got damaged in a pretty bad storm. So it is pretty typical for what we see out there. There actually used to be a manufactured home on this lot, but we're not sure when it was removed. We couldn't find it in the records. We just know there was one there at some point.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Of course.
Guys, any other questions? No? Okay, if there are no other questions and no one would like to speak for or against, I'll go ahead and take a motion, please, to close this public hearing.
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion, please, for the variance project 20231029?
Make the motion that we approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion so passes. May I have a motion, please, to open public hearing for variance project 20240652?
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now in public hearing.
So the second item, this is a variance for a property located at 233 Pine Ridge. This is Doris Miller representing Cody Schuman, and they're requesting to reduce the right-side setback from 35 to three feet for a garage that was previously constructed. So this is located on the north end of the county in the Lake Lorraine subdivision, and this gives you a better idea of the location here. And it is also zoned RR1 rural residential. And this shows you their site plan. And I'm going to go through some background information here to kind of get to how we got to this point today. So there was a mobile home placed on the property in October of last year, and at that time, the applicant inquired about the rules on accessory structures and what we would and would not allow. It was at that time they were informed of the 50% rule, where the accessory structure has to be 50% or less of the primary home. This conversation was escalated to Amanda and then Audra, the Director of Community Development, and then eventually to the Board of Commissioners about potentially changing that rule. That rule did not change, as we know. And then the Community Development Department received a complaint for construction without a permit on May the 21st of this year. The county then went and issued a stop work order on May the 24th of this year, and then citations were issued on June the 7th for the garage size and encroaching into the side setback. Staff did go on a visit on June the 17th to find the garage, and we took some pictures here to reveal the garage is 1,948 square feet, and it is three feet from the fence, which according to the recent survey they had, the fence is on the property line. So here's the pictures of it, and here's some from the front as well. So the variance is being requested due to the violation of the setback. And so going through the four variance criteria, I'll just go through them individually, and then if y'all have any questions, in a way, you can just let me know. So criteria one, we say unnecessary hardship would result from the strict application of this UDO, and it shall not be necessary to demonstrate that in the absence, no reasonable use can be made of the property. The property is less than 150 feet wide, and staff does understand that claim, but we just feel the vast size of the building is really the hardship here. The building is far larger than anything that the UDO would have allowed to have been placed on the property, and just the excessive size of it. The second criteria, the hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property, such as locations, size, or topography. Hardships resulting from personal circumstances, as well as hardships resulting from conditions that are common, may not be basis for granting a variance. So the applicant claims the narrowness of the lot and that there are many non-conforming structures in the Lake Lorraine community, while again, we do understand the lot is narrower than what we would allow in the RR1 district. Non-conforming structures in the neighborhood, we don't feel are basis for granting a variance. Many of these structures were built decades ago. They were built without permits, and the county can't go, you know, and enforce a new ordinance from what was in effect decades ago. And again, we just feel the excessive size of the building doesn't align with the intent of the ordinance. Had they came to us, you know, and said, we want to build something that we would have allowed under the UDO, they might, would have asked for a more appropriate variance. Going into the third criteria, the hardships did not result from actions taken by the applicant or the property owner. The act of purchasing property with knowledge and that circumstances exist may justify granting a variance and shall not be regarded as self-created. Again, we do understand they didn't create the subdivision. Lake Lorraine was subdivided in 1965. This was prior to the zoning ordinance, but we really feel the size of the building is kind of what created the hardship. The building was built with no permits, with no prior approval from the county, and it doesn't meet the technical requirements that the Unified Development Ordinance would need. And with the fourth criteria, is the variance consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of the UDO? Again, the building wouldn't meet the technical requirements of the UDO, so even if y'all were to grant the variance, it would still be larger than anything we would be able to permit under the UDO under requirements that can't be varied, like the building size. And we also feel the zoning ordinance doesn't allow a side setback of three feet in any zoning district anywhere in Bryan County. There is no zoning district with something that small. And the variance is meant to have the minimum variance necessary for a property, and we don't feel like this is consistent with the minimum variance needed just due to the vast size of the building. Had it been smaller, maybe a more appropriate variance could have been requested, but that's just not where we're at.
Is the building complete?
Yeah, the building is complete. You can see it here. It was reported after it was mostly finished, so.
Okay, that was my next question. Is this, this has electricity? I mean, everything's, or is this just a freestanding building with no electric and no plumbing?
I do believe there's electricity in there. I don't think there was any plumbing when we went out there. I think it was just lights and things like that.
Question, if we deny the variance, and I've never had this happen, that I can recall in my four or five years, if something's built without being permitted and it's against the UDO, but they've gone ahead with the build. I know you did a stop build. There's been nothing left, but what happens to the building?
Yeah, so they were issued a citation, and so in that case, it works its way through the court system.
Okay.
And we did receive a couple of public comments that were sent to you all. There was one included in the package that we received before they went out, and then y'all were both sent the two emails, and the applicant was sent those as well, so they also have one of those.
Okay. So would, it would just go through the court system, and the building would have to be torn down? Is that the end result if?
Yeah, that I wouldn't know, and I wouldn't speak to. Just it would work its way through the court system.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I've not had this happen before. Any other questions for Brett?
So Brett, this was not inspected by the builders?
No, there were no county inspections on this building. There were, when they submitted for the variance, they did give us their building plans that they had. There was one sheet included in here. So they have the plans for them, but none of the work was inspected by the county, so.
No permits?
No, this was built without a permit.
So can they get a CO on this?
They cannot, because even if the variance is granted, the building is too big for us to issue a permit. The UDO requires that an accessory structure can be 50% or less of the primary home square footage, and this is larger than the primary home. Due to that fact, even if they were to get the variance, we could not issue a building permit. The UDO says you cannot vary the building size, and because of that, we could not issue a building permit or a CO for them.
My answer you received, are they stamped? Were they engineered plans?
I can't recall off the top of my head. I think Ken may have them. I'm not sure if they're stamped or not, though.
Joel, Michelle? No? Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
First, I'll offer the applicant, if you are here and would like to speak. Hey, good evening. If you would just state your name and your address into the microphone for record, thank you.
Okay. I'm Cody Schuman, and I live at 233 Pine Ridge Drive. Is that all that's supposed to be?
Yes, that's it, thank you.
My name is Cody Schuman, and I own and reside at 233 Pine Ridge Drive, and that is a lot to send question. First, I would like to apologize for the trouble and inconvenience that the situation has caused the county and all departments involved. Second, my grandmother, Doris Miller, has been trying to help me since I purchased my mobile home in September of 2023. I have been incapacitated since September of 2022 due to an accident. She has asked me and got my permission on everything that had to be done with getting permits, decals, et cetera, that was necessary to get this mobile home. I want this committee to know that, to know and understand that my grandmother was, asked me about this permit. I took the advice from my contractor, who informed me that he did not think I needed a permit as he would build it as similar to a pole barn. I realize now that in hindsight, I should have listened and followed protocol, and due to my experience and lack of knowledge, I ask that you please consider all the things that my grandmother and neighbors and friends have to say, and that I may be able to get this situation corrected and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Cody. Does anyone have any questions? No? I'll just speak to something real quick, just to kind of ease the tension here. I have a friend on planning and zoning staff in the city, and I never understood why all the permits from the city and the county, and why do we have to pay these fees to get permits? And then I had a neighbor that had some really bad work done, and it cost them a lot of money. And now I see, because it brings people out from the county or the city to inspect the property. And you get lots of good guidance from planning and zoning, so now I see. So I know you didn't do anything nefarious. You just, some people just don't know. And so thank you for coming to speak, and we'll allow others to speak as well. And if you should have any questions back and forth, we'll get those answered tonight as well.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you. So we have read two emails that were sent to staff, and I believe they, like Brett said, they were also sent to the homeowner. Next, I only have one speaker slip, and this is...
I have one additional.
Oh, you have one additional? Okay.
I think the representative, Ms. Dawn Schatz, here.
Oh, Ms. Doris, okay, I apologize. Ms. Doris, come on up. Good evening.
Hey, how are you?
Good, how are you? Thanks for being here. Don't be nervous. I tell everybody, we are your neighbors. We're just appointed people. The only difference between us tonight, more comfortable chairs. That's it.
Okay. I too apologize for Cody, for the inconvenience that this has caused the county. We regret what it's done. But you know, when you're young, you're going to go to the person that's, they think's going to help them, and that more or less is what Cody did. And I'm sorry it happened that way, but I would like to just point out some things that hopefully will put an insight to some of the things on this particular situation. As noted in the variance criteria, when we filed, we did file and get a variance permit. The septic tank and the light pole is right behind the trailer, and he could never have built the building this way because the septic tank and the drain lines and the light pole was right in the way. And that was there when we bought the property. We didn't put it there. His lot is smaller than one acre. It's only 100 feet across the front. And if you came 35 feet that the counter requires from each side, like the picture showed a while ago of the lot, you're just going to have to, a little narrow space going down it. Also, we had to go with a detached garage because of the size of the lot, the septic tank in the lot, and the light pole. The board already has some pictures showing some of the neighbors' properties that were on this lot. And since then, I have got a few more, and I'd like to give them to the board. If you'll just take one and pass it down. There's three of them here. And if you'll notice, on these particular pictures, I took a lot of the others, but they didn't, you couldn't show up and show how far it was from the privacy line, the private, uh, property line on each side, because people don't clean their lines up. There's bushes hanging over, and you couldn't get really good pictures. And if you've been down Lake Lorraine, you'll see that. But you'll see here, this is a picture of Cody's trailer. And as you can see, it's not something that's cheap. We put in, we tried to put in something that was nice, something that would improve the looks of the neighborhood and would be an asset to the neighborhood. And if you look at the next one right here, there is a garage built directly behind this mobile home. It's less than three feet off the property, and it is bigger than Cody's building. And if you see on the other side of that, you will see where they got a garage where he parked the camper here, and it is less than three feet off the property line. And the people that's on this side of it has buildings right next to the fence line on the same side. And if you were to ride down Lake Lorraine on both sides of the property, you can see this. And this is, this has not happened yesterday. This is, this was established in 1969, and the lots are very, very small. Like I said, they're less than 100 feet. A lot of, most of them's less than an acre. And the people that's built there, maybe they didn't get a permit, maybe they did. I can't vouch for that. I know personally, a lot of them didn't, because I was the HOA secretary for 20 years, so I know that. But in Cody's case, he should have gotten a permit. I know that, and he knows that. He listened to somebody else, like he said. But anyway, like the guy told him that it was to be starting out, the guy was going to build it like a pole barn. And it would have three garages. He has three vehicles, and then it has a utility for his tools and his lawnmower, whatever. You understand what I'm saying? I also want you to look at the permit, the petition that was taken around. I think all of you have copies of that. You will find that the petition read, there was a complaint sent in from one of the property owners at Lake Lorraine, that the petition was telling the county that they wanted the people to agree to this situation that Cody has. But that's not what the petition said. The petition read that by signing this petition, you are telling the county that you have no problem with Cody building the garage and that it is okay with them that the variance is granted. They didn't say grant the variance, or there was never anything said about the approval of the building from the community as per the email that you received. This was given their opinion that it was okay with them to do this. There's 103 lots at Lake Lorraine, and it has 62 signatures on that petition, which is 60% of the membership and agreements for variance. Each member has one vote. And on that petition, you're going to see some of them has two, two signatures, some of them has three. When the covenants of that neighborhood was established, each person who owned a lot got one vote. Well, there's more people that owns two lots and three lots. And if you see three signatures of the same person on that document, that means that he owns three lots and he gets three votes. And when something happens in the community that we vote on, that person gets three votes, and that's why people signed it as they did. Showing that way. Now Jackie Rice sent in a note, a letter. She was the president of the HOA. And I assume that you got that letter, and I don't need to read it.
We have two. I do not see, I see a, Jackie's her name?
Jackie Rice.
I think that's the other ones were in your packet.
That was the one in the packet, okay. These aren't printed out. Yes, we did receive one in our packet, and so I guess these two were after. Okay, yes, so we all did receive it in our packet.
She has, those are starting on page 46 of your packet.
Okay.
She submitted, which is an application.
Okay.
Okay, so if you would like me to read that, or you want to look it up, or you already read it?
No, we reread it. I just wanted to make sure what we were looking at, but we did read, reread that, yes.
And also, I have a letter from Ernie Ron. He is a board member of the Lake Lorraine HOA. And you also have that letter in the pack.
Yes, in the packet.
I have Charles Coleman here, and I think he said that he wouldn't speak unless he needed to, but you probably have that letter also.
Yes.
Okay, and then I have Brian right here. He's, he lives next door to Cody. And I think he's going to speak after me.
Yeah, we have, I have him. I have a speaker slip from him, yes.
And then we have the president, past president of the HOA, Charles Orell, and he would like to say a word.
Okay, I have him as well, yes.
But before we do, I have documentation from C.L. Gayheart, who is a member of the board as well as a fellow neighbor. And he said on there that there was no conditions, there was a conditioned space for an office. There is no office in this building. It will not have an office in it. He has three vehicles, a utility shelter, and that's what it is. And if you look at the lay of the land on both sides of the lake on those pictures that you have in your packet, you will see that the land is going downhill, straight downhill. And you could, there's only certain things that you can build on this property. You have to build, you have to build the lay of the land up, and that's what we did in order to get this done. There was an email in there from somebody named Lonnie. We don't know Lonnie. There was no lot number on that email, and there was no address on the email, so we don't even know if he lives at Lake Lorraine. So if you take that in consideration, we don't know who that is. I don't know if I'll speak after these guys speak any, because, but I do wish to thank everybody that has helped us. I thank the people that's come here from Lake Lorraine to give us their time. I thank our family and friends in the community, and I thank you guys for listening, and that if you would help us out, we would appreciate it. And I have one more document for you. This was, the covenants were redone in 2007, I think. And it says in there that this was a court ordered here. It has all property in the subdivision is subject to the regulations of Bryan County regarding development, subdivision, and property use as well as the applicable state laws and regulations. So in actuality, Lake Lorraine, the county would have the final say.
That's right.
Not Lake Lorraine.
That's right. And always, that's just how it is, the county supersedes HOA. Yep. Ms. Doris, were you an attorney?
No.
Got your, should have been. Erin, need to hire her.
I don't know about that. But anyway, we appreciate it, and we feel like if y'all can help this boy, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I want to add, because I did go see this building Saturday.
Oh, there's one thing I want to add. They said it was electricity.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, there is no electricity in there.
Yeah, it's, it was, it's rough-wired. It's got a spigot at the front, that's the only plumbing. And when they received a stop work order, that's, the garage doors didn't get hung. Y'all haven't done a thing to the building or the trailer.
We have not, we have not, when it stopped order, we stopped.
Yeah.
Everything. Somebody turned us in and said that it hadn't been stopped. Of course, we have cameras hung all over that place out there. Somebody has cameras hung all over it. And we don't know who turned us in, and it doesn't matter because we didn't do anything wrong. But we, we had, the garage doors have been ordered before this. But we had, the garage doors have been ordered before this, but they have not come in. We stopped it. They're holding them for whatever. Hopefully, we can get through this. And we only had a piece of water pipe that would be hooked up later to just an individual sink. There's not a bathroom there. There will not be a bathroom there. And the electricity was to put to where if he wanted to run a grinder or chains, I mean a power saw or, you know, something to that effect, he would have that. And you had to have the electricity to open the garage doors. So we done the best we could.
Thank you, Ms. Doris. Brian, I can't pronounce your last name. Is it Dehan?
Yes.
Ah, come on up. Good evening. And again, if you'll just, for the record, name and address, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Brian Dehan, 261 Pine Ridge, next to Cody. Good kid, no problems, awesome neighbor. Actually, my wife wrote it, short and sweet, but I'm going to fly by the books. When I bought, decent lot, there was a building on my property that was bigger than his garage. Not the prettiest. I did take it down. His building, he did a great job. It looks awesome. I have no problems with his building. I'm not a lawyer, I don't talk very well, as you can see. I have no issues with his building and I have no issues with Cody. It's a beautiful building. I watched him build it. It gives us more privacy because the neighbors on the other side of him, and they have cameras up everywhere and they tend to watch all of us. Not a good thing. So it gives me plenty of privacy. I kind of like his building. I like to see, yeah, but where it's at. It doesn't cause any problems on my property. He takes care of his property, brought our property values up. I don't have an issue with it. As you can see, your neighbors all showed up. They don't seem to have issues with it. They probably could have brought 10 more in here if they don't have an issue with it. They would have came behind Cody tonight. There's always going to be one that has an issue. I don't care where you live. There's always that one. It's kind of short and simple. I don't know. If you want destruction, look at the plant going in. Look at the power lines going in. I mean, that's a destruction. This little garage don't mean nothing to me.
To be clear, you're the one on the side, the same side as the garage?
I'm next to the garage. I have no issues with none of these. Great lot, great kid. So if anyone would have a problem, I think it would be me and I don't have any problems with it, so.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it. Yep, thank you. Good evening, sir. How are you?
Hey, good evening. I'm Charlie Orell. Good evening, everyone. I'll probably be stating some of the same things you've already heard here. Just my little note I wrote, you know. And I'll start out with, my name is Charles Orell. We own the property at 275 Pine Ridge, which is two doors down from the Schuman property at 233 Pine Ridge Drive. And of course, that's next door to Brian. Brian's between me and Cody. We have owned this property for over 20 years. We're happy to be next to the Dehan and Schuman residences. Unique nature of many lots on Lake Lorraine is that they are very narrow, 100 feet or less. And they would have heard this. This can create difficulties when locating structures on these lots. Many of these lots are flat for the first half, but then go rather steeply at times down to the lake. So you only have like half the land to use. They taper down pretty steeply at times. The variance being requested by Mr. Schuman is needed due to the lot width and the fact that the septic system that has been in place for decades is in the middle of the lot. Before coming in to see you today, I stopped to look at the Schuman residence. It is absolutely beautiful. The house, garage, and dock are all first class, certainly an asset to the community in every way. This development poses no hazard or inconvenience to adjoining neighbors or the community. It would create no additional traffic, noise, or nuisance. There will be no activities exercised there that are not allowed by current zoning. Being two doors over, I will know if this happens. I have known the Schuman and Miller families for many years and have never questioned their honesty or integrity. They're good neighbors and work very hard to keep their houses and yards looking very nice. Today, I hope this board will approve the variance requested. It is for the betterment of the community and hopefully will be a motivation for others to keep their properties in good order. In closing and after viewing this property firsthand, I would support a total stranger if they were trying to do what Mr. Schuman has done. And I'm happy to have him as a neighbor. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Mr. Schuman, you're a lucky guy. All right, guys, that's all the speaker slips. I had any more gone? No? Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
There's one in the bag there.
Got two? I saw that hand first, so, okay. He's yielding to you. Good evening, how are you?
All right, how you doing?
Good.
My name is Charles Coleman. My parents bought, as soon as Cecil Mason developed a property on Lake Lorraine, my parents bought a lot, waterfront lot. And I think this was probably back in late 65, early 66. It was a case back then where neighbors helped neighbors. Y'all have the statement that I had made. My father was Charles Coleman Senior. Harry Sweeney, he had the lot next door. The property was 701 Blue Gill Road. I know when my father, when they moved in, he had, I think it was maybe an eight by 10 shed, which was probably, you could get a lawnmower between it and the property line. Harry came over and I was there that day. I do remember that. And the size house that Mr. Sweeney wanted to build was larger. He needed permission to build close to the property line. And it was probably seven or eight foot, something like that, from the property line. And of course, my father gave him permission. After my parents passed away, the property went to my sister. When she passed away, the property came to me. And I had it for about two years. I think I sold it about two years ago because it was just too much for, try to keep up two lots. Like I say, back in the day, neighbors helped neighbors, you know. You didn't have to come up here for a commission meeting or anything to get permission. I do believe honestly, this is just the way I feel, that if it was anybody else's grandson, Doris and Harold's grandson, we wouldn't be here right now for this. There's just too many personal vendettas going on. I've been hired to do work over at Cody's place. I put the handrails around the dock, which like you say, the dock is first class. We're out there working. The neighbor next door, he's got his phone out there recording what's going on. There's cameras on the trees to see what's going on, you know, in the neighbor's yard. And that is not right. That is no way for anybody to be. But that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Coleman, what's your address?
I'm in 570 Mack English Road in Alabama.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm good.
Good, good. Name and address.
My name is C.L. Gayheart and I live at 69 Pine Ridge Trail. And I guess I'm going to be the bad guy. There's a bunch of folks that didn't show up tonight because they want to be friends with Cody. I don't know Cody myself, but he seems to be a good kid. The problem I've got is everything that I look in y'all's books, your codes, everything talks about conformity. Sooner or later, you got to have some conformity. They've talked about Lake Lorraine over the years, over the years, over the years. Understood. I built a garage 14 years ago. I got turned in by Doris Miller. Had to go down and get a permit, which I already had plans, had already filed for the permit. I had to do the back sets. I had to do everything that they were asked to do, that they didn't go to do, which they didn't do to do. So I ended up putting my structure off the edge. I've got a 100-foot wide property. I had to shorten up my garage. Had to make my garage smaller than I wanted. But I did what I knew was correct. Because I've been in the building industry for over 42 years. And I know about permits, I know about the whole thing. So I'm not going to go through all that. But I know that my soil, we were on Sand Hill. Y'all know that, it's all sandy. I had to go get soil from somewhere else, bring it back to make my compaction test work. So my garage would compact, so the walls wouldn't collapse and the floor wouldn't crack. And we know that that hadn't happened. We know no inspections have happened. We know watershed's bad. We know there's watershed probably on the neighbor's property. We know that watershed going to the lake. Y'all have got pictures of stuff coming out that garage going to the lake. We know that's not good. Let's see. All right, so Doris talked about her petition. If I get someone to write a petition up to say that it's okay for me to go 50 miles an hour in a 35 mile an hour zone and a policeman pulls me over and I hand him that, that doesn't make it okay. So just because a petition's been passed and it's been signed, it's not valid. That makes no sense to me. And speaking of the letter from Jackie Rice and from Ernie Ron, they're on the board. I'm on the board, but I'm not yet representing the board. But we have not had a meeting to approve or disapprove what's going on. But we were supposed to have, as a board, plans turned in to us prior to building the building and that didn't happen. And Doris mentioned she's been on the board for 20 or 30 years and she knew that should have happened. So that didn't happen either. And, you know, I hate what happened, happened. Cody seemed like a nice guy, but, you know, somewhere, somebody's got to draw a line and make what you guys do correct and make everybody in the neighborhood do what's supposed to do to the law.
Thank you, Mr. Harden. All right, that's all I have. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against?
I do.
Ms. Doris, come back up to the microphone, please, ma'am.
I'm not going to make this a shouting match. I just want to clarify a couple of things. I have never been on the board at Lake Lorraine. I have been their secretary. I have never been on the board. The second thing is you have a picture showing the driveway at Cody's house. I think that Mrs. Maxwell took and sent to C.L. And there's a little bit of sand right there. Well, that is on the concrete walkway. That is not on the dirt. That is not on the grass. It is not oil. And that is when we had that four to five inch rain. And we had just laid grass. And just between the grass and where the gravel is on the rock, there was a little strip through there. And that's white sand that came out. And how Mr. Gayheart knows so much about this building, that he's never been invited to visit the property and he has never been invited to come on the property, and how he knows so much about it, we don't know.
Thank you. Okay, I think we've heard from everyone. Yes, Amanda, did you?
Yeah, I just have some staff comments just to close out before y'all deliberate. Because I do think it's important for the record and I want to make sure that it's clear for everybody, that this building was cited for violating two sections of the zoning ordinance. The first was the building was encroaching into the building setback located three feet from the property line. The second section of the ordinance that this building is violating is the accessory structure size. This building is twice the size of what is permitted by the Unified Development Ordinance. That standard is not variable. That standard is not before you this evening in order for you to grant a variance to allow it at the size that it is. The only thing that you're considering tonight is the setback in that encroachment. And I just want to make sure that that's clear and understood. Because if this variance is granted this evening, it only takes care of that one violation for the encroachment. It still has to be resolved about the building size and that will still continue through the citation and the court process.
So that would not come back before us? That continues through the court system?
That's right.
Okay. Understood.
We can't hear variances on the size of the accessory, but I thought we'd done that before. Have you never done that?
No, we haven't done that under the UDO. The reason being is because that's the standard that's specified under Article 7, which are U standards. And U standards generally are not addressed through our variance process.
Gotcha.
Erin, did you want to speak?
Yes, if I could, please.
Erin Kapler's our county attorney, so he's going to speak to some.
Madam Chair members of the board, thank you for your time this afternoon. I wanted to follow up on Commissioner Floyd's question and some of Amanda's comments. And she's exactly right. The accessory use cannot be varied. Before this structure was built, Ms. Miller did approach Community Development and sought information about how large the accessory building could be. She was told it can't exceed the 50% threshold. They constructed the need, okay? Then from those concerns that she raised, it was brought before the Board of Commissioners. It was decided not to take an action to amend the UDO, which is how it would have to be modified in order to allow this structure. So the size of the structure cannot be varied by this board. It can only be varied through legislative action by the Board of Commissioners, which they elected not to do. So the only question for this board tonight is whether or not to allow the variance for the side setback. And remember what Brett said. There is no zoning district in this county that would allow a three-foot setback. Not the current zoning of that property nor any other zoning classification in the county. So to grant this variance, you would literally be creating a variance that would not be allowed anywhere else. And so I want to leave those for you as well. If you have any further questions, I'm happy to answer any legal questions you might have.
I have a question and maybe you can answer this I asked earlier. If we deny and, but still the accessory size goes through the court system, will he have to just tear the building down? Is that the final answer?
Well, there's a couple of different remedies available under law, under state law and under the UDO. Removal of the building is one potential that the court could order. One question that was raised earlier was whether or not the plans were stamped, the ones in the file. They're not. They're not stamped by an engineer. They weren't inspected during the process because there wasn't a permit, of course. Because if they sought the permit, it would have been denied because you can't have this accessory building that large. So no inspections, no stamped plans, no sealed plans, no drainage addressing the drainage, which typically goes through the same process. So there's lots of issues here, more than just the side setback.
Any other questions for Mr. Kapler? Thank you.
What you said, removal of the building is a remedy. Are there others? The court ultimately has discretion on what that remedy may be. Removal is a remedy available under state law. Whether or not the court elects to enforce that remedy, that's for the court to decide.
How long does that process usually take?
So typically, we do it often through an abatement action, where we file an action saying this property's nonconforming or it's dilapidated or what have you. It'll come before the court. And if the court finds it is, meets those requirements for an abatement, we often give 60, 90, 120 days to allow it to come to compliance before the county would go in to take any action to remove it itself. So it's not just like tomorrow, lights switch, you got to go.
And that would stay all in Bryan County in the court system in Bryan County?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. You can come back up, sir. You did a great job.
Where we lived, we're at, if you can picture it, we're at the bottom of the hills. After us is the lake. We take out everybody's water. He did a great job doing all the work he did. We don't have any water issues. We haven't had none since he's done this. We just came to prevent the rains that everybody flooded and we had no problems. So that can't be an issue. The concrete went in, I mean, that kid poured so much concrete to make sure nothing's moving. He did a great job doing this. It can't be a rain issue. There's no, after all these rains, we do get the most rain on our side, our lots. And we had none. He had none, we had none. If we get that much rain, you can kiss Elidel goodbye. So it can't be a rain issue that he's saying. It's not a drainage issue. So I don't know, it's just.
Thank you, Brian. And you did a great job.
I have one more question.
Okay. Just back up to the mic, just so it can be recorded. So they can't say Stephanie Falls didn't let her talk. Talk about me on Facebook.
Maybe I misunderstood the attorney. But didn't you say that we didn't have a stamped set of plans?
The one in the file is not stamped by an engineer.
This is the one that the guy that was going to do the house and is stamped here. Is that not an engineer?
Does that stand for garage or for the house?
Does that stand for garage or for the house?
It's for the garage.
So that's not what's in her file?
I mean, this is, this is the one that I, that we were going by. So maybe y'all don't have that?
Would you like to leave a copy with them, just for the file?
I'll only have one copy here, but you can make a copy.
Yeah, we can do that.
But this is, this is a stamped copy. And like I said in my notes, it started out as a pole barn. And that's what this is with the stamped copy from the engineer of the pole barn. And what he was going to do was kind of, and a pole barn usually is not, the sides is not done. It's left open. And what he did, he built it like the pole barn, but he put in the sides.
Yes, we can get, um, get copies after. Thank you. Okay, guys, I appreciate everyone speaking. You all did a great job. Don't want anyone ever to be nervous for coming here, and we always can go back and forth and get any clarification. If this board has all the information they need, yes, any other questions from staff, applicant? No, all good. Then I'll take a motion, please, to close this public hearing?
Motion to close. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion, please, for item number two on Board of Adjustment, variance project two zero two four zero six five two?
I make a motion to deny this variance.
A second.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So Dawn, note, um, Alex was the only nay, um, so the variance is denied. Um, and if you, but it will go? This, no, no. No, the variance does not, but it can be appealed. Um, so, Mr. Kapler?
Yeah, that's right. So this board sitting as the Board of Adjustment is the final decision they gave the board. So it does not go to the Board of Commissioners?
Only, only plan, so just for the record, so the first, um, two items, the Board of Adjustment, um, this board has the final say on those variances. However, they can be appealed. That is kind of the process. Um, and then if that's something that you would like to do, that can go back through our planning and zoning staff. Second, uh, part of tonight, the planning and zoning, we will make a recommendation. We're just a recommendation body. That will, um, those recommendations will go up to the county commissioners at their next meeting, and they'll make the final say on that. Alright. Thank you all for being here. Um, if you wanna stay and play with us the rest of this time, you can. But I know you guys have a long haul back, back to Elabel, so if you would like to go, um, safe travels, we'll give you a moment to exit. Yeah, but you're welcome, but you're welcome to stay as well.
That's okay. Thanks for hearing us. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, guys. We'll give them just a second to exit. Alright, next item on the agenda, we have planning and zoning. May I have a motion, please, to open public hearing for planning and zoning?
Make a motion to open?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now in public hearing. Brett?
Planning and zoning item number one is a request for a burrow pit to be located on, uh, Georgia Highway two oh four. Chad Sitrower is representing with Kern and Company. They're requesting a conditional use. Uh, the burrow pit is a hundred and sixty-five total acres in size. And as you can see here on the location map, it borders Fort Stewart when you make that first curve on two oh four going towards Pembroke. And this shows you the A-five zoning, and it also kind of gives, uh, well, this next one, well, this is the site plan. This gives a better idea. So it's actually going to be two separate burrow pits. The smaller one is, uh, about eight acres in size, or eighteen acres in size. And the other one is a hundred and forty-seven point eight acres in size, this larger portion. Uh, and we did wanna point out, we met with the applicant first in January of this year. They did go back and revise their concept plan. We had some comments that are included in your package from when they came to the DRC meeting with us. They went back and they added some additional buffering on this rear side. They were only required to do fifty feet. Uh, they amended that to a hundred feet, 'cause there are a couple residential properties on this side. And they did leave a hundred feet on two oh four, and they're showing their access here, and then on Pine Baron as well. Uh, they had to complete a traffic impact analysis, as other burrow pits have had to do. The traffic impact analysis came back with an estimated of a hundred and eighty-five loads per day, with an estimation, an estimated duration of twelve years, uh, for the total duration of the pit. Uh, along with that, TIA came some comments that are built into the staff recommendations. Uh, and we did take some pictures as well, just so you can get a little familiar. This is on the two oh four side. I'm sure you've all seen this curve a thousand times going that way. And then, uh, the less traveled Pine Baron Loop Road, uh, that kind of is in between two oh four. It connects on both sides. So that's what it looks like. Uh, and they, they did say they're planning to keep those buffers as they are today. There's nothing better than, you know, undisturbed vegetation. Uh, so staff is recommending approval with the following conditions. A final site plan and buffer plan conforming to the specific supplemental use regulations governing excavation and mining operations as set forth by Section one fourteen dash seven three one of the Unified Development Ordinance shall be submitted for review and approval prior to the commencement of any land disturbance or excavation activities. A north bypass lane and south bypass lane must be installed onto Highway two oh four in compliance with Georgia DOT design criteria and with DOT approval. A final access plan showing driveway spacing will be required for review by Bryan County. The site is expected to close in twelve years from start. If it remains active beyond this point, or a change of use is requested, an additional TIA will be required to maintain the access permit. Uh, fourth, the operator and developer shall incur all costs associated with the transportation improvements recommended from the TIA. Uh, fifth, the size of the burrow pit shall not exceed the hundred and thirty-two acres shown on the concept plan entitled Redgate Burrow Pit Prepared by Kern and Co. dated July second of this year. Any proposed expansion shall require an amendment of the conditional use. And sixth, the applicant shall obtain a state mining permit from the Department of Natural Resources, and a copy of this state mining permit shall be submitted to the Community Development Department prior to work commencing, work commencing. And lastly, an adequate site plan for fire apparatus must be provided. Roads must be suitable for fire truck operation and access available to the entire site where machinery will be operating.
Good job, Brett.
Do y'all have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
'Cause I drove this. The curve, how far will the entrance exit be from that curve on two oh four?
Yeah, so you see on their site plan here, the curve is right here, right where two oh four meets Pine Baron Loop. And the access will be way further up here.
And how, about how far is that? Do you know? Or the applicant could speak to that? That was my concern.
He might would have a better idea than me. I'm, I'm not that good with distance.
Okay, yeah, good.
And along those same lines for the smaller pit, where would the access to two oh four be for it?
Yeah, so they're actually not proposing access to two oh four. They showed two access points here on Pine Baron Loop. Um, I believe this burrow pit is just to kind of set top soil from here on this side. So they would just cross here, and there would be no, this would be the only access to Highway two oh four.
Okay.
Thank you, Brett. Thank you. Any questions for staff?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, do we have the applicant here? Good evening. How are you?
Pretty good. How about you?
Good, good. Thank you for being here.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. Uh, my name is Chad Sitrower with Kern and Company, here tonight representing Bandic Bluff as, uh, which is the owner of the property, as well as Land Your Development, which would be the operator. Couple of items to go over. So as you mentioned on the concept plan, we've kind of shifted the access drive as far north as we can to get away from that curve everyone's talking about. Uh, so we've kind of looked at that and, and have some of the same concerns and addressed that, and also went through the TIA. And got the recommendation for a bypass lane to be installed, which we've agreed to construct. And that would be a hundred, one hundred percent at our expense. Uh, some questions came up regarding the smaller seven and a half acre bar pit. So, and going through, uh, EPD's regulations and bar pit mining activities, you have a lot of water quality treatment before you actually discharge. And so the intent of that smaller pit will be to go ahead and strip the topsoil off of it, move it to the large area, excavate that area, and start using that as a treatment basin in order to get rid of all the turbidity and things of that nature prior to discharge. So while it's not a big, uh, you know, driver, a, as far as inventory that we would sell out of that area, it is a major contributor to the functionality of the bar pit and the, the quality of soil. Excuse me, the quality of, of water that will be discharged. Outside of that, you know, Land Your Development has operated in excess of twenty, uh, bar pits in the, the nearby area. Very familiar with EPD regulations, uh, you know, relationships, maybe what they're looking for, as well as could familiar with, uh, you know, keeping the, the access drive safe and a lot of visibility on the front. Um, we will pave a, a certain port of entry. A lot of times you'll see these bar pits with like a dirt or gravel drive. Number one, they track up a lot. Number two, the trucks will kind of spin their tires as they're coming in and out. So we go ahead and pave a hundred and fifty foot in. That way it gives good traction, as well as clear good site visibility, triangle each side. So, uh, you know, there's good visibility coming each way, both for the people traveling to it for, as well as the drivers coming in and out. Outside of that, we've reviewed staff recommendations, have no issues. We've also spoken with the, you know, Fire Marshal, kind of regards to what he's looking at. He did bring up the, the emergency ingress eager, or excuse me, a secondary ingress egress, which would be off the Pine Baron Loop. Uh, we went over him. We would keep that gate locked, 'cause we want all of our trucks utilizing the, the primary Pine Baron access. We'd provide a Knox box lock or some of that nature, so they could get in for emergency purposes. Uh, other than that, be glad to answer any questions or comments you may have regarding the application.
I have two, please, sir. Um, thank you for all the information. First, can you guys go back to the map, please? Um, so you said you're gonna move that entrance north. Um, can you just give me a distance or an estimated distance from the exit?
About eight hundred to a thousand feet north of, uh, excuse, yeah, eight hundred to a thousand feet north of where that curve is. You can kind of see the furthest, most leader, kind of where there's a, a drive coming in. I don't have a pointer.
Okay.
Um, but that's where the access drive is, and, and that's where it's shown as our, in our traffic study.
Oh, I see. Proposed access.
Okay, how close is there to their new power lines that they were putting up in that area?
To my, down on the other end there, the, the other end of Pine Baron Loop?
Yeah.
So that'd be, I mean, fifteen hundred, two thousand feet.
And Chad, my second question is, um, for the burrow pit hours, um, as we're moving into, you know, fall and daylight savings, um, when do you stop your last load?
So both EPD and Pine County's ordinance says allow sunrise to sunset.
To sunset, okay.
And that's, that's what we would comply with, because they actually align.
Okay, perfect. Okay, great. Any other questions?
I've never seen a, a state mining permit. Is there a, is there a wildlife component? Is there any? Do you take into consideration any of the wildlife?
It goes through an agency to review. To be quite frank with you, I don't know if they look at it a lot. Um, there are some, you know, if you go through wetland impacts or anything of that nature, uh, we do. Which, we kind of delineation on this. Don't think we have any issues, but, I mean, we can, we can address any concerns you may have. But it's not a, it's not an aspect of our permitting process.
Yeah, gotcha.
So we did go ahead and do a threat and endanger species, uh, analysis.
Oh, okay. Found anything?
Five turtle corpses.
I rescued one of them out of that curve about three months ago, and I promised him nothing would happen to him, so that's why I'm asking.
Well, we, we are, we are mitigating those, there are five turtles, so they, they, they have a nice five acre, um, area of buffer that would be, uh, there you go.
I'm gonna tell you like I tell my husband, quit stopping on highways to move turtles.
I had a spot.
Like, you're gonna die moving a turtle. Chad, thank you. Any other questions? No? Thanks. Um, do we have, we have no speaker slips? We do. Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Jonathan Black? Mr. Black, good evening. How are you?
Good evening. How are you?
Good, good, good.
My name is Jonathan Black. I live at eight two four Pine Baron Road. Elabel, it is the property that is in the corner, I guess you'd call it the north corner of, um, off of Pine Baron Road. So this, I have eleven acres that actually backs up to this property that's gonna affect. The power line that you asked about, the new power line, it actually about where that driveway comes out, that's about where the new power line goes across. It comes down the highway, and then goes across right there. So it's probably within, maybe a hundred, hundred yards, maybe at the most, is where that new power line just come out. My biggest concern is when you dig the pit, and it has, I think you said a hundred foot right of way that you're gonna create. Is that right?
It's a hundred foot natural buffer.
All the way around the whole thing?
On the rear property line. On the southwest property.
So it'd be mine and then Bobby Myers' place, the two on?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So that'd be a hundred foot buffer, basically?
Natural.
Natural. He's gonna leave it like it is?
Correct.
Okay. When you dig this pit, and I don't know if you've been down there?
Hey, guys, I'm sorry to do this. Just address all to me, and then we can go back for it. No, it just keeps it cleaner. Thank you.
When the, when the storm came and we had all this water, that whole, right, Pine Baron Road, which is actually the, the buffer between his piece of property and Fort Stewart, it was probably a foot and a half deep of water running like a river. So my concern is, is when they dig a pit, and it fills up with rainwater, they got to pump that water out in order to keep digging. The water on that property goes to Fort Stewart up to two oh four, essentially going to the Gitcha River. So when they pump that pit out, where is that water gonna go? Is it gonna flood our, access to our house? And then if you, then secondly, is if he's digging two pits, and you're going across the Pine Baron Loop, is that gonna be accessible? Because people use that every day. If you got truck traffic, equipment traffic, is that gonna tear up that little piece of paved road?
I think he said they're gonna have a gate there. Did you say that? And all, um, trucks would come in and out of two oh four to that far, um...
So are they gonna come out of the little, the little pit across to the big piece of property and then go all the way out?
Yeah, that's the access point.
Yeah, so they'll have to go all the way up to the top of far.
The county road, go back on another piece of property, and then come back out to the county road.
Chad, how? Okay.
Because both of these roads, Pine Baron Road and Pine Baron Loop Road, don't really get maintained hardly at all by the county. They come in after the storm and pull the ditches because they had a foot of water. They didn't know what to do with it. They've not pulled ditches in over two years. They barely grade the road. Well, they try to grade the road. They've, they've pulled the, they've, when they grade the road, they've actually cut the road down to where you have an abatement on both sides of the road now. And they keep cutting the road deeper and deeper and deeper. Well, if he pumps dirt out, or water out of that pit, it's gonna flood our road. So all of us on Pine Baron Road, Coyote Trail, um, essentially Wolf Pen, all of us are gonna be flooded. And if you're in a car, and the county just doesn't seem to address that situation.
Sure. What, thank you. What did the engineer say about the flooding? Was there any notation from the county engineer when they looked at this?
No, so I don't think that there was a specific notation about that, but I think I will defer back to the project engineer, because I'm sure that there's some requirements for how they manage, um, that water.
Okay. Mr. Black, so I've got questions. I'll let, um, Chad come back, and if you just wanna hang on the front row, and we can go back and forth like that, just so all is recorded. When we turn, I hate to be like that, but when we turn away, it doesn't get recorded, and then things get missed. So the first was about the flooding, Chad, and the second was about, um, entrance and exit, especially from that smaller, um, eight acre burrow pit.
Alright, so this is a zoning application, and, uh, quite honestly, we have not done stormwater calculations on this project yet. However, with that being said, we just went through and permitted the Davis Utley pit up in, uh, on Eldor Road. And, you know, per state requirements, we're allowed to discharge what pre-development current conditions are. And the only thing we can discharge when we're excavating this bar pit is what's coming out of this pump. Well, when you look at what's draining off of a hundred and thirty acres today, and then you create a depression, and the only thing you have is one pump coming out, it's a drastically reduced runoff rate than what is currently occurring. So it's actually, uh...
So it's actually, you know, where it may be five or ten percent with an actual pump scenario, compared if you go to typical development with a stormwater detention pond, you're at ninety or ninety-five percent. So that's kind of the way the stormwater works with the bar pit as far as runoff is concerned. Regarding the cross access, going back and forth Pine Bearin with the stormwater. So what we'll do is excavate that area. Like I said, bring the material over to the other side, get it set up for stormwater, stormwater, stormwater quality control. In doing that, we'll install a culvert under the roadway and we will have trucks and equipment going back and forth during that duration. We met with Public Works at our DRC meeting. We will restore that roadway into a manner better than what we found it. We feel confident of that. And, you know, we, once that's done in the first, you know, six, nine, twelve months and we get that area, quite frankly, that, that access is going to be gated. We won't be utilizing that anymore. So the remainder of the duration for the twelve, twelve years is what we've anticipated would only be with two oh four access and nothing further occurring going across Pine Bearin Loop. So that's just a short term established stormwater quality mechanism and then we would gate that off and no longer utilize that for access.
And you said that would be about us?
But we will retain it into a manner better than it was found.
Sure, thank you, Chad. And that, you said that would be about a six to nine month upfront project?
Six to nine months of, once we actually start. So we'll go through a clearing exercise, get BMPs, silk fence, things of that kind. But from when we actually start, six to nine months back and forth.
Okay, perfect.
Chad, hold up, just, just so I'm clear. I think what Mr. Black was asking about is not the stormwater, but the water that's pumped out of the pit, the groundwater that you encounter while you're digging the pit. He wants to know where that water goes.
Okay, so. All right, so east of the seven and a half acre small water quality feature is a drainage ditch with a lot of water that comes from the north side, comes across and then drains back further south. And so we would establish that as our stormwater quality basin. And then we would basically have a rim ditch going around it, slow the water down, treat it, and then it would discharge through riprap. On the east side and the large portion of the property, we would de-water that area, send it through a pipe into the water quality treatment area, then filter it out and discharge it. There is a level, and what that does, it reduces the amount of stormwater flow, but it also treats the stormwater from a water quality standpoint. Because when you're pumping out the bottom of the basin, you get a lot of turbidity and everything else. And EPD monitors what the turbidity of our discharge is. So same way you do with construction permits, you have turbidity requirements you're required to meet. So it's, I mean, we can provide some pictures of some other ones that we've done, you know, for this purpose. But I, I feel stormwater volume as well as water quality will be as good or better as what's coming out of that location now.
Thank you. Thank you, Chad. Mr. Black, did that answer your questions? Yes, yes, yes.
The, the, the one thing?
Sure.
To exceed what is there now will be a plus because there is, I mean, it's mass devastation when, when it rains over there. I mean, the road is just terrible. It's not county main, well, they grade it, they call it maintained, but it's really, I mean, if it had been for me and my neighbor with a tractor to go out there and grade the road, half the time my wife's car couldn't come down the road. I mean, we've been stuck multiple times in the middle of the road. And to where the low end of that property is, it kind of floods out to that corner, that point right there, and then runs down the main, the main part of the road to the main part of the highway. So the water, the little pit that he's gonna dig is gonna, quality, storm quality water, if you're pumping into that beside that, I mean, it's a high hill, but then it drops off drastically, which in turn is gonna flood the road. So that's our concern is that the road, they're not gonna access the other part, but.
And I think he was saying they would have a culvert so it would run underneath?
High hill side of it. The low hill side of it, you really can't see because it's a loop that goes back out to two oh four to where Jody Price has property and all that. So, and all that's low on that side. So that way, if all that water's draining that way, it's more potential. I don't know the rate amount that's gonna be pumped out, but. What we just had, you know?
Yeah, tonight, we're, you know, we're handling this planning and zoning, the rezoning, or the conditional use permit, I'm sorry. And so at this point in their project, he said they have not done the storm work, which is typical for this. So I'm glad that you came to speak because I've seen him taking notes that can address those certain areas.
That's what we're, the main thing we're worried about is the water.
The water, okay.
Because where's it gonna go?
Right.
Because that road floods so bad now, if the water has nowhere to go.
And that's something they need to know and that's good since you live there. Let's let Ms. Black speak before she. Come on up.
Obviously, I live at the same address. My biggest concerns is he works at the port. So when he leaves, he goes to the right out on two oh four, you know, back towards the port. When I leave, I go back towards the left. And I see it all day long, the times that I'm coming and going, the amount of traffic that is on two oh four just from the Hyundai plant because people come around instead of taking sixteen anymore. Has there been a study for the amount of traffic volume that's right there? Because they cut that curve right where that curve is and as they're coming out of that curve, the first thing they do is wanna pass the next person. I can't tell you how many accidents that I have seen because I cut on that Pine Bearin Loop and come up onto two oh four. It's just easier for my car to get up there. So I see it every time I'm pulling out. And, I mean, every day I can tell you of people coming out of that curve and then trying to pass somebody or either somebody's turning and they, they're trying to turn left and they wanna pass them on the left side, right in that curve. And whenever we had the hurricane, yeah, the road was washed out. It, it did get washed out. But the Sunday after the hurricane, when our road was completely dry and fine, we had two inches of rain, which I like to see what two inches of rain did down where that spot's gonna go. Because since we bought this property, we've watched the county grade our road, literally, road behind the road graders because you can't go around them, watched them scoop our dirt off our road and haul it, followed them one time, and watched them dump it on another road. They'll dump out rock to better our road and then they'll scrape it up and they'll take it to another road. So they've continued to dig like a river and turn our road into that with no ditches. And if you sit at the end of that road where that point is, where the stop sign is, where it goes from paved to dirt, I guarantee you it's that much deeper than it was since we bought our property.
Is this gonna be your district?
That's Pine Bearin Road after two inches of rain. Two inches. And that's what it looked like for over two days. I couldn't even go to work. But that's what we dealt with. Now. So, and the other thing is, is if that, and all that water drains that way because they changed the elevation of the road so much and it drains down to where the pavement is. Well, across from, you know, on that corner is a metal building. It used to be like an equipment. They had all kind of equipment sitting out there. The entire culvert that goes underneath that paved road out there is collapsed. The whole road is gotta dip probably that far in it. I mean, I couldn't even drive my car to that side of the road. So if they close this side of the Pine Bearin Loop, I'd have to get rid of my car because I wouldn't even be able to get over where the collapsed culverts are, where this water's gonna be directed, where it's collapsed anyway. And if you ride out there, you can see before you even go, just to get an idea of the volume because of the elevations, if you look out into the woods of Fort Stewart, all you see is all the sand and the dirt from our road is out there. Because that's how they, that's how they've changed that landscape by what they're doing to our road. And it's very, it is very frustrating.
I can imagine. Yeah. And you said you will be their representative. Okay. Chad, when do you anticipate this project starting?
It would likely be, you know, roughly six months before we got through EPD permitting and things of that nature to take place. But we will make it a point to contact, and I'm sure staff will as well, Public Works, and get out there and meet with them prior to going to, you know, the board commissioner regardless of what action this board takes.
Perfect. Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
And Mr. and Ms. Black, Alex Floyd was just elected to be your representative, so he'll be sworn in in January. His email address will be on the county website.
I'll get it to you.
Yeah, or you get it. So any questions that you have?
That's ways area, isn't it?
No, if they're south of two oh four. I'm everything except the wedge between two eighty and two oh four.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is gonna be your county commission representative, so that's your point person there.
Yeah, no, by all means, keep calling wait.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Yeah. Okay. Hello, how are you?
So hi, Rob Lee with Land Your Development.
Yes, sir.
And number one, I'm gonna turn around one second and say, we want to be good neighbors. We've done a lot of this. We know we can be an inconvenience. We want to be good neighbors. We have not drawn the mining plans yet, but the small seven and a half acres is for a sedimentation pond only. So there's only six to eight thousand yards of material that's going to come out of it. So we're, we're not going to recoup a lot of material out of there. We're basically gonna get it out of our way so that we can pump and discharge our water somewhere. With the elevation of the one hundred and twenty-five acre borrow pit and the lakes and the lake we will build, we will go in and do a rim ditch. Our water table is about eleven feet from our soil horns. It will be, I don't know how long, it will be a period of time before we actually start pumping. And through our EPD permit, we have to have, and the county of course, we have to have proper discharge channels for them to issue the permit. So, they've never allowed us to flood a road before. We've had to put proper piping and culverts and do whatever it took to get the discharge down. So I suspect they will require the same thing this time.
And Ms. Black mentioned a traffic study. Y'all did conduct a traffic impact analysis?
We, we, we did a traffic study and they rewarded me with doing a turn lane, a decel lane and a passing lane. So we did do one.
You said one hundred and eighty-five trips a day. Thank you. This is why we have this back and forth. This is the time to do that. Although we're here for permit, I, I just, sorry. Yeah, it keeps, keeps everybody information flowing. All right, guys, does anyone else have anything else to say on this?
Sorry. So she just asked me when the traffic study was done and I believe, if I get my dates right in the report, we did, we submitted in January. They required us to do a traffic study that was completed in, I think, May, June.
So in the height of the traffic still, yeah. I know. Yeah, we know, yes. Okay, guys, I think that's for, you guys are for a second item on the agenda. So if no one else is here to speak for or against and you've had all your questions answered and they've taken note of everything, do you guys have any other questions? No? May I have a motion then to please close this public hearing?
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed. May we please have a motion for item number one on planning and zoning, the conditional use permit for this project two zero two, four zero zero, two four.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the conditional use permit with the staff recommendations that have been outlined.
Second.
A first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so this will go up to the county commissioners at their next meeting for final approval. Okay. Thank you, thank you everyone for being here. May we have a motion, please, to open a public hearing for item number two on planning and zoning?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're now in public hearing, Amanda?
So this application was filed by Arabella Capital. They're requesting a conditional use permit to develop a self-storage facility located in the B two zoning district. The property is located on Highway seventeen. Now, the site may look familiar to you. This property was rezoned by the board of commissioners. This was done back in twenty twenty-one. It was rezoned as part of what is being referred to as the River Crossings Townhouse Development. So on the map here, you can see the portion in orange was the portion from that original rezoning that was held aside for multifamily development for townhouses. And then in the fronts, running on Highway seventeen, there were two commercial out parcels and this is one of those out parcels. So it was already rezoned for B two use. At the time of that rezoning, they did not have an identified commercial user. So they've put it out to market and Arabella Capital has filed this application for that self-storage facility. Now, whenever we're looking at conditional uses, we do have criteria that we follow. And in particular, with certain uses, we have supplemental conditions that we have to evaluate the applications by. For self-storage facilities, there are specific supplemental conditions that an applicant has to meet. Those are listed under section one fourteen dash seven forty of the U D O. So as a part of our evaluation of this request, we did review those supplemental conditions to make sure that the applicant would meet or that they intend to meet those supplemental use conditions, which they are. We also look at the compliance with the general zoning standards, both of the B two district as well as development standards. And that's where we review the, the concept plan to make sure that the site that's been selected for this type of use can support what they're proposing. So with the concept plan that has been filed, you'll see it does show the potential for a sixty thousand, approximately a sixty thousand square foot building. We are talking about an indoor climate controlled facility, so they're proposing it here at three stories high. Ingress and egress is planned to be provided by what's going to be constructed as a new private road. This is the same private road that will provide access to that townhouse development to the rear. Now, in looking at the plans compliance with general zoning standards, the one thing that I do want to point out is the request that's included in here for a deviation to our parking requirements. Ordinarily modifications or deviations to parking standards could be and would be reviewed at a staff level. However, because this use is a part of a conditional use permit being brought to a higher board, we've incorporated it into this request. So with those parking standards under the U D O, we have parking ratios that get applied generally to different uses. For self-storage facilities, our parking ratios are identified as one parking space per ten doors. It does not specify per ten units, just doors. So there's some interpretation that could be applied there, whether it's unit doors to storage units or in a case such as this, just exterior doors to access the interior of the facility. With that, you know, ambiguous nature of that standard, typically whenever we've dealt with outdoor facilities, we've applied it to outdoor storage unit doors. Whenever we're applying it to this scenario, the applicant felt like that created a burden on the amount of parking that would have to be provided. So they have shared with us some parking scenarios from other facilities of a similar size. And we also went back and consulted with the Institute of Traffic Engineers Parking Generation Manual, which is a professional group that has done numerous studies on different types of uses to see what they would recommend for this type of facility. And based off of that, you know, those recommendations come out to about six parking spaces for a facility of this size. And our applicant here is proposing nine spaces plus an additional ADA compliance space. So we do find that to be appropriate with the request. Now, I do have some sample photos here that the applicant has also provided just to give an idea of what type of facility we're talking about. And I do want to make clear that we have standards in our supplemental use conditions for self-storage facilities that talk about whenever these facilities are located near or adjacent to residential uses. And it talks about trying to achieve some compatibility in terms of design and aesthetics. So we don't have a final design or concept for this facility. What we would be doing is working with them as the townhouses are designed and developed to make sure that we are complying with that standard and making sure that we have some cohesiveness there, especially since this would be sided up at the front entrance for that townhouse development. So in staff's review of this, we are recommending approval because we believe that it does comply with the conditional use standard. does comply with the conditional use standards that are laid out in the ordinance. Uh, we're making that recommendation with, um, the requested parking reduction for the nine spaces that they've shown with their concept plan, and we do have some conditions that staff is recommending to carry along with that. Um, the first condition, um, is that the conditional use permit, um, if approved, should be applied exclusively to an indoor climate controlled facility, which is what they've presented this evening, um, in that if any modification is made to include outdoor storage units, that that would have to come back through this body and the Board of Commissioners as a major amendment for further consideration. Uh, the second condition that we have is about the final architectural design, um, indicating that they still need to come through final approval with the Community Development Department prior to, prior to moving forward with any type of construction permits. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Amanda. Questions? Guys, any more questions? No? Thank you, Amanda. Um, is the applicant here, would you like to speak? Good evening, how are you?
I'm doing well.
Good.
You are as well?
We are, thank you.
I'm Kenan Strad with Robert Civil Engineering. I'm an authorized agent for the applicant, and just kind of wanted to give you, obviously a high-level view, which you've already kind of received, it is indoor climate self-storage, approximately sixty thousand square feet fenced in around the area as required by the UDO. Um, it'll be one-way traffic. Again, we've talked, discussed parking spots. This developer has several self-storage sites. Also, from what Roberts has designed, this actually has the most parking spots of any storage site that we have designed typically. One, there's not that many trips, and two, you don't really park in a parking spot to load up your storage facility, you typically park along the route. Um, and so with that, just want to be available for any questions that you all may have.
Questions for the applicant?
The, um, the other commercial property parcel, that's the Georgia Power Station, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm thinking about lighting, but there's no way y'all put off more light than that store than that power station does, so.
Probably not.
Yeah, okay. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, any other questions for staff? No? Okay, with that, may I have a motion, please, to close this public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is now closed. May we have a motion, please, for item number two on planning and zoning, the conditional use permit for project number 20240688.
Make a motion to approve as presented. With staff recommendations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, so again, this will go up to Board of Commissioners. Thank you guys for being here. Amanda, do we have any other business?
No.
No? Do we need to mention about the two positions that are going to be available? I'm very upset about this, but-
Yeah, we, we can make mention of that. Um, so if you've seen on the Bryan County Facebook page, we have put out advertisements for two, um, positions on the Planning and Zoning Commission that are going to be coming vacant, um, at the beginning of 2025. Um, so we are accepting applications for those positions, um, and look forward to, you know, hopefully getting those filled by the end of the year.
Okay. So just for public comment, um, I know this is streamed, this, the information's on the website, it's also on Bryan County Government, um, Facebook page. If you need more information, you can call the Planning and Zoning, the, your application will go to the county commissioners and their unappointment will be made, and these are four-year terms, correct? Yes. So, um, everyone who wants to get involved in the community, uh, encourage you to apply. So, uh, no other business with that, I'll take a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And so adjourned, thank you guys.
We did that 2021, 117, 2021, has it been that long?